So. We are convening this meeting at five thirty-five. I don't see any members of the public here to comment on closed session items, so we adjourn to closed session.
So, one. And we are reconvening from closed session, so trustee Cloud will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, moving into our public hearing, I am going to open our public hearing about the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials per ed code sixty-one hundred nineteen. Tony, is that?
Yes, so the purpose of this public hearing is is to determine if our students have sufficient instructional materials as per Williams, and that all the classrooms are well equipped with equipment and instructional materials that they need to operate a classroom. As of right now, the school sites have certified that they have the sufficient materials needed to operate their schools, and and we'll be bringing the resolution forward later as action items.
If anyone has public comment on the sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials, you're welcome to bring a public comment card up to Bree here, and she will pass it to me, and we will call on you, and you can talk for up to three minutes. I will give the longer spiel about all the rules about public comment in a little bit. But seeing no one rushing the stage, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing. And we will move on to special recognitions, reports, and presentations, starting with a school report from Pengrove Elementary.
Yes, yes, there we go. We have a bunch of our Panthers here to tell you about some of the greatest things that they love about Pengrove. You may have heard that there was a bit of construction going on at Pengrove, might have made its way to you. Well, it's complete. Yes. So we're here to brag about how awesome it looks and for you to hear from the kiddos about that. But first, we have a quick video that these guys all made.
Welcome to Pengrove.
Hello, Panthers!
Come with us to explore some of the new spaces around school. We can't wait to show you how amazing Pengrove is.
We're super excited to have so many new spaces on campus.
Our playground is bigger and better than ever. The new classrooms are ready and the portables are down. We have so much space to spread out and have fun. There are new wall ball and basketball courts, so everyone has a spot to play. And new grass area gives plenty of room for extra soccer. The new trees are growing, and we can't wait for the added shade. Mr. Z even has space to bring back intramurals. For my favorite part of the new playground is the stage, because we can have Pengrove emotion all together before the school starts. I love dancing and getting my day started.
Our new classrooms are magical places.
They're perfect for learning.
And connecting with teachers and friends.
The classrooms are spacious and great places to learn. In sixth grade, we have been working on Genius Hour and get to present our projects soon. We enjoy classroom circles so we can connect and build relationships with our teachers and classmates.
Come with us to explore the library.
Pengrove Library is clearly the best. We love the new reading tree corner with all the great books and listening to stories with Mrs. M. We are really lucky to have such a magical space to enjoy reading.
Thank you for visiting Pengrove.
We're better together!
So, as you saw, some of the things that we are really proud of is our expanded outdoor stage, which we are utilizing to the fullest. We have three full-size basketball courts, four wall ball courts, the expanded grass, lots of trees that are small but mighty and growing. And our lighting and striping is happening during fall break, which is in two weeks, so we'll be enjoying that as well. And then our library is phenomenal. We had the sixth grade class last year. A parent donated his time and supplies, and sixth grade had raised some funds to help finance this, and it is absolutely beautiful. So at this point, I'm going to have our Panthers introduce themselves and their grade and tell you their favorite thing about Pengrove.
My name is Dylan Rich. I'm eleven years old and in Miss J's class. My favorite part of Pengrove is probably the new space we get in the classrooms, which was really nice because we had constructions for a little bit, and we had these portables. And after we moved into there, it had a lot more space, and we all had a really good time.
Are you ready? Right up here. Okay, come here. How about this?
I don't want to.
You don't want to talk? Okay. Do you want to tell me? You don't want to tell me? Okay, that's fine. She does. Nora, you want to go, hon?
My name is Nora, and I'm in Miss Itores' class, and I'm in second grade. And my favorite thing about the new buildings is the library, because we get so much more space.
My name is Hazel. I'm in fourth grade. My teacher is Miss LaBockis. My favorite thing about the space is probably the library, because I like to read books.
My name's Luke, and I'm in second grade, Miss Tracy's class. My favorite part about school is the wall ball courts, because you have a lot of space to play.
My name is Ben, and I'm in fourth grade. My teacher is Mrs. LaBockis. My favorite thing about the new space is the new classrooms.
Hello, my name is Kai Scott. My favorite thing about the new space is the library in between the fifth grade classrooms. It's a great space to learn and get books before library starts.
Hi, my name is Emma, and I'm in second grade, and my teacher is Miss Chikatelli. And my favorite part about the new spaces is probably the library, because I try to take as many books home as I can.
Hello, my name's Cello, and I'm in first. My teacher is Mrs. McClintock. I love the library, because we get to find out new things.
My name's Yu. I'm Pengrove. I'm in Pengrove. I'm in kindergarten, too. And my favorite thing is the library, because I like to read books.
My name's Wyatt. I'm eight years old. I'm in third grade. My teacher is Miss Rupp. And my favorite thing is, wait, what was it?
What's your favorite thing about the new spaces at Pengrove?
Oh, um. The wall ball courts.
Great job, Panthers. We hope to see you all come out and enjoy our spaces, too. Thank you.
Thank you all. Good job, Panthers. What a bunch of good public speakers. You guys could be in high school or college with that. I love it. All right, next up, we had the Panthers, and now we have the Cheetahs at Cherry Valley.
Good evening, Petaluma School Board. My name is Poppy Nora, and I'm in eighth grade.
And I'm Kai Woodyard. I'm in eighth grade.
And I'm Colin Bgio. I'm in seventh grade.
We are the students at Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley. We are part of the Leadership Elective Class, and we are pleased to share with you a bit about what is going on at Cherry Valley right now.
There are a lot of great schools in Petaluma City Schools, but we love Cherry Valley. In this presentation, we are going to talk about how we learn, our events, PTA, and family involvement, as well as our connections and how these different aspects of our school make Cherry Valley thrive.
At Mary Collins School, we grow and learn in many different ways, creating connections with friends in multi-age classrooms that allow kids to form bonds with older students and also have the opportunity to be the older student that guides younger students through their time at Cherry Valley.
Here, the education exposes students to many environments and ways of learning. The outdoors, such as our quad and the garden, are ways we bring our school together and participate in activities that teach students valuable things in engaging ways.
The connections throughout different grades is one of the most important parts of Cherry Valley. The buddy and mentor system create connections between students as old as middle school with the younger grades. Having these connections creates many opportunities for students of ages, different ages, to learn from each other and spend time together in places such as our amphitheater, the garden, or exploring the labyrinth.
The influence from these different environments helps students grow and learn outside of academics, and the outdoor environments are often included with academic learning that creates connections between subjects that students would not have previously considered to be connected.
At the beginning of every year, we have Beach Day. On Beach Day, every Cherry Valley student in each class goes to Dillon Beach. We have games like Beanbag Toss, Tug of War, and Ring Toss. Students can also make sand castles and holes on the beach. Often, kids join into teams to create the biggest sand castles.
It's an especially unique day, because all the grades go together from TK to eighth and interact on the beach, working on sand castles and playing together. This field trip is a tradition that is over forty-one years old.
The Walk-a-thon is an annual Cherry Valley event that includes the whole school from TK to eighth. It's a fun-filled day, it's a fun-filled and excited day that many kids look forward to every year. Students run or walk laps around the track while earning prizes and helping raise money for the school as they compete their laps. The Walk-a-thon allows students to get plenty of exercise while helping the school and having fun. All the music treats and amazing staff members make this day all the more memorable.
Parents can choose to donate beforehand or donate a certain amount for every lap their child completes. Cherry Valley never fails to raise an incredible amount of money from the wonderful parents and students of all ages. It's a wonderful tradition that is a massive contribution to our school and helps bring the Cherry Valley community together.
Another event that really shows how our teachers help us thrive is the eighth grade trip to Ashland. It is more than a fun road trip. We have to camp, cook some of our own food, learn how to read and interpret Shakespeare, go on hikes, and visit historical sites.
This trip is a fundamental part of our middle school experience, because it builds stronger relationships, gives growth, and inspires students to be more independent after the week away from home. It is a fun and educational way to end the year and their time at Cherry Valley.
Cherry Valley parents work hard to help us have opportunities to shine. Two of the best examples of this are the tap play and the variety show every spring. Our theater arch program is run by parent volunteers in the Provide After-School Times to help students of all ages develop acts to showcase their talents.
The variety show is one of our favorite things, because everyone participates regardless of their level of talent, and we get to show off who we are, and we develop our stage presence, even our youngest students. This huge event would not have been possible without our parent volunteers who encourage us, help us refine acts, and even develop a tech team of students to run the whole thing.
For students who want to invest in developing their singing, acting, or technical skills, the tap play is our very best opportunity. The parents who volunteer to run this program have professional theater experience, and they offer it in order to help, and they offer to help our older students to put on a high-level production that really works in tandem with our visual and performing arts charter. Tap is one way that Cherry Valley students can thrive.
One of our ways that we have our PTA and all of the family involved is Celebrate Reading Day. Celebrate Reading Day is a day where everyone in the school, including parents, go into the quad with books and read them with people or by themselves. They could either read books that they brought from home, from their classrooms, or from the school library. We all find a spot on the quad. There are benches, mats, and they could also sit on the concrete. This event shows MCCV students that our teachers, staff, and families all value reading, and that's what makes it fun.
There are lots of ways that Cherry Valley fosters connection and relationships. One of the big relationship-building events that we have at our school is Sixth Grade Camp. Sixth Grade is part of MCCV's middle school and a big tradition for our students. This event takes place at Kari Toz Creek and Occidental for five days from Monday to Friday.
When the sixth graders get to camp, everybody goes to their cabin and drops off their bags, and then they start having fun. There's a lot of choices for food, but people try to get the food that they're going to eat, because they weigh all the meals and the food scraps, and they try to have the smallest amount of food waste possible.
After that, there are group hikes, where group leaders meet up with their kids and take them on walks in the wilderness. In the afternoon, there are activities like electives, where you pick a different activity each day. You also get an hour of free time each day, where you can roam around the campus, play basketball, or have fun in the pool.
When our sixth graders came home from camp last year, we had changed. We had new friendships, we'd conquered some fears, and we were ready to tackle middle school's team. This is a great example on how our experiences helped develop our relationships, and this is part of Cherry Valley's commitment to helping us learn in authentic ways.
As you can tell, we are proud of our school. It's a place where all kids can have fun, learn in a variety of ways, and build lifelong friendships. We want to thank the board for the ways you support our charter and the resources you provide us to be the positive, unique school that Mary Collins Cherry Valley is.
Thank you for having us tonight. I'm really proud of these students and two of our sixth graders who did the whole slideshow and wrote it. They are, but our sixth graders are actually at Sixth Grade Camp right now, so they didn't get to present.
Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations. It's always nice to get to hear from our year-round schools first, because you all have been, I can't believe it's already almost time for y'all's fall break. That hurts my brain. Moving on, we will take our fiscal year twenty-four unaudited actuals presentation. Oh, yeah. Should we do a photo? Let's take a two-minute break, people, for a photo op with the board, and then we go on to the unaudited actuals. Noah's. All right, I'm going to re-convene the meeting at six-twenty-three. And now, well, no one wanted to stay for the unaudited actuals, Amanda? Why does no one?
I can clear a room.
All right, I don't know why you guys always make me go after the student presentations, so. It's like, man, all right. So tonight, we bring forward our twenty-three, twenty-four unaudited actuals for the board's approval. This is where we are in the reporting cycle, so in June, we brought to you the LCAP and the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Now, in September, we bring forward unaudited actuals, and the next time we will talk about twenty-three, twenty-four is when I bring back the audit in January. What is the unaudited actuals report? This is the final accounting, the district results for revenue and expenditures as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. It is prepared using the Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. We go through the school, excuse me, the California School Accounting Manual, known as the CSAM, and we take our financial system reports, and we roll them into SACS, which is the state software. This is the way the state can ensure compliance, and it makes all school district budgets and actuals read the same for compliance and accountability reasons. Why are projections different than expected? The last time we discussed, our twenty-three, twenty-four budget was at our second interim in March. Projections often use conservative estimates for revenue, and with expenditures, what we anticipate can be spent. So if we have a restricted resource that has a two-million-dollar budget that we intend to spend in a fiscal year, we're going to budget that whole amount, so it doesn't show as a negative. Some of our restricted funds are multi-year allowable uses, so like our Arts and Music Block Grant, we can spend through the end of twenty twenty-six. So you'll see variances in our restricted, mostly our restricted expenditures, where we think we're going to spend them, and then as the year progresses, we end up closing them out, and then at the end of the year, they will now roll forward to our first interim in December. There are also fluctuations in the economy, state funding, and student enrollment that impact our revenue and our expenditures. These factors contribute to the differences between projected and actual financial results, emphasizing the importance of flexibility and continuous monitoring in our financial planning. All right, the important stuff. Here is a picture of our total general fund revenue and expenditures for the year. I would like to remind everyone that this includes Petaluma City Schools, which is our elementary district, our secondary district, SOCC, the South County Consortium, Pengrove Charter, and Mary Collins Charter Schools are all rolled into our general fund. So at second interim, we anticipated our revenues to be a hundred and twenty-two-point-five million dollars, and they ended up at a hundred and twenty-two-point-six million, with a slight variance of a hundred and twenty-nine-point-eight, or a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, not million. And then our total expenditures at second interim, we anticipated spending a hundred and forty million dollars, and we spent just under a hundred and twenty-eight million. So you see most of that variance. We spent twelve-point-two million dollars less than projected, and most of that is in our restricted funds. Yeah, unfortunately. This was our beginning balance and our ending fund balance. We started the year with a total of thirty-five-point-five million dollars, and we ended the year with thirty-point-three million dollars. As you can see, most of our deficit spending was in our unrestricted. This, we talked a lot about during negotiations, that is where we would see quite a bit of it. On our restricted side, we will continue to spend down the restricted balance of twenty-point-four million dollars over the next couple of years. We have a year left of carryover in our ELOP, our after-school program. Our Arts and Music Discretionary Block Grant ends at the end of twenty twenty-six, and I have a slide that talks a little bit more in-depth about our restricted balances. That's right here, which is super hard to read. I know. Is, I don't know if there's any way to probably not blow that up at all. Okay, that's okay. So I'll just point out a couple of the, I already, I'm going to pull it up here real quick. Yeah, so our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, that's our ELOP after-school program. We had a, on the special ed, you can see it is a dollar. It's a variance of rounding, so there is actually not a balance there. Of our educator effectiveness, we have just over eight-hundred thousand dollars left, which educator effectiveness needs to be spent twenty-twenty-seven. Yeah, twenty-twenty-seven, so we have some time. Yeah, that's our professional development. Our lottery instructional materials, we had a balance. And Dave, if you just want to do the, sorry, the descriptions, I'll just, I have the amounts. Yeah, thank you. And then we have some funding, about a hundred thousand dollars in our anti-bias education grant, which will be spent at the end of this year. Some restricted mental health-related services and special education preschool grant that we're working on plans to spend those down. As I discussed earlier, the Arts and Music Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant must be spent at the end of the next fiscal year. Oh, sorry, I didn't say a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And then. This is a fun way of doing it. Thanks, everyone. All, yeah, that's perfect. All right. So we have our Prop twenty-eight. We received our first allocation last year, as I presented, that we did not spend anything, so this is the carryover, which we will work on spending down. And then just some other one-time child nutrition grants for facilities. There's a Classified School Employee Professional Development Block Grant that has just over three thousand dollars left. Our LCFF Equity Multiplier, that was new last year, that is San Antonio is our school that qualifies for that. We have A-to-G grants left. A little bit of ELOP, ELO, excuse me, which is the original pandemic funding that we will have spent by the end of September. And then our Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, there's a small balance there that we will spend down by the end of September. Our other restricted state, and I just want to point out that eighty-one-fifty resource, which is our ongoing and major maintenance, that each year we have to put three percent of our expenditures into that account for routine restricted maintenance. This is how we pay for all of our maintenance and custodial, and this is for general maintenance. This does not help us with our deferred maintenance, but we have that in there. And then our other restricted local, our different grants, and it's our grants, our. And then our other restricted local, our different grants, and it's our grants, our property tax, um, other donations and things like that. Parcel tax, I apologize. Yeah, so um, all right, that was super helpful, thank you, Dave. All right, so this is just a picture of our general fund revenues from second interim to un-audited actuals. You can see where our variances are, um, an eight thousand dollar variance with LCFF. Um, my guess is that our ADA went up, our, either our ADA or attendance went up just a little bit. Um, we received additional federal revenue and of just over six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, other state revenue of just under a million dollars. Um, some of that is our Prop twenty-eight allocation, because we didn't have the full amount. We didn't know what we were going to receive, and other local revenue. Um, sometimes this comes in at the end of the year as a reimbursement, when our PTAs and other groups um give promissory notes um to pay for uh different things for our schools, and then we bill them at year-end. So our total variance was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in our revenue.
Amanda, what, what form does the uh general, oh, sorry, does the federal revenue for general funds come in?
So what, so what are they?
Yeah, it's not Title IX, it's or.
No, so it's Title One, Title Two, Title Three.
General funds?
Yes, it's all, so our general fund is what we call our Fund O-One, um, and this is the general fund. This is all of our restricted and unrestricted dollars together. So um, one of the fun things about federal funding is we receive our allocation in January um for the year that we're halfway through, so um this is updated. As we close the books, we re- we receive our final allocations. I think we were receiving them as late as the end of July, so that's where these variances are. And for our expenditures, I try, I tried to not do like any major like na- I try. Hopefully, this is a little easier to read than my first one, when I made everything red and bold. So this is just to point out, on our certificate expenditures, our certificated salaries, we did spend um a two hundred thousand more than we thought at second interim. This can have to do with stipends, additional subs, or any additional positions that were brought in after March. Um, our classified salaries, at second interim, we had put into our budget nine point five percent salary increase, and we did give them a ten percent salary increase, so that will show that variance. Our employee benefits um came in a little under when the system assumes that all people are STERS or PERS members, so there's always gonna be a variance at year's end. Um, the biggest changes in our books and supplies, you can see that we had budgeted just over eleven million dollars that were unspent. That's a lot of times how the ex- uh restricted resources are budgeted, because we don't, we know it's not going to be staffing, we're not sure if it's going to be in supplies or other operating. So we follow the trends of the year. Um, this is where towards second interim, it gets a little harder, because we've looked at the whole year, but spending starts to die down, we cap off spending at May. So um, this is something we'll continue to work on with our restricted resources, how to clean, give a better picture um with our second interim reporting. Our capital outlay went up just by about three hundred thousand dollars um in our other outgo, a hundred and seventy-one thousand. Our indirect costs, um, we charged a little less than anticipated. This can be for a few reasons. Um, you charge indirect, not on the revenue you receive, but your expenditure. So if we didn't spend the whole amount in the resource, or if we um in a resource that allows for indirect, if for some reason we spent a little bit more than budgeted, the district takes less indirect to make sure that the services are maintained and received. Um, this is for a total variance of twelve point two million dollars for our expenditures. These are special fund ending balances, our adult education ended with just under two million dollar balance. Um, most of that is highly restricted. Um, our cafeteria ended the year at two point eight million dollars. This was one of our goals for last year, as we implement our new food service program. Um, we will be operating at a, a deficit for this year, as we bring on new staff and um new equipment, and trying to work out the, the food with the salad bar. Um, our deferred maintenance fund, um, we reopened it up and put just a tiny bit in there and got some interest. So there's that, that was just to get it open, so we can start with the deferred maintenance plan. Um, though our building fund shows that we are ended a balance of twenty-four point five million, if you look at the, the actual Saks software, you can see most of it up to um almost eighteen million of it is actually committed. Um, one of the building, things about the building fund is it does not really operate on a July to June. Um, bec- because most of it's a, it's project-based, so a lot of times there'll be a report, and it looks like we have a lot more funds than we actually do at, at year-end. Um, we do have our reserve for capital outlay that ended with just over two million dollars. Our enterprise fund, um, and so Fun sixty-three and Fun seventy-three are both scholarship funds, and Fund sixty-seven is our self-insurance fund um at just under one million dollars. Our year-end compliance, I know when the budget was originally presented by the former CBO, Chris Thomas, um, one of the concerns with the budget is if the district would meet our CEA for last fiscal year. And I'd like to point out that we did meet it, um, we needed a minimum of fifty-five percent, and um we closed the books at fifty-five point nine-two percent. That means that that is what we spent on direct instruction. Um, this is something that we'll need to continue to watch um over the years. We met our MOE for our SI, Maintenance of Effort, and our special education um actuals and our budget. Next steps, um, the Sonoma County Office of Education will review, approve, and forward our un-audited actuals to the CDE. They will then review and post um to the EdData website. Uh, we will continue our external audit, um, and they will use the professional standards in CDE Audit Guide, which I will bring back um to the board in January. That is when our un-audited actuals will become our audited actuals. So, and um, as always, we couldn't do this without our team. Um, it's the business department works really hard this time of year. We're closing out one fiscal year, and we're starting anew, and with that, there's a lot of other pieces of compliance that other departments are needing um from us. And uh, just, this is a great organization and team that everybody has been super patient, so I just wanted a quick thank you to everyone. And that's it, are there any questions? Any board members, student, or grown-up have any questions?
So I just wanna make sure I got the big picture, right, okay? So around a hundred twenty-seven million dollars, spent uh five million over revenues, and our reserves dropped down by that amount to thirty million.
Yes, so our unrestricted reserves are now under our ten percent, which we anticipated. And so the goal is through, um, as we talk about this year, and we look at starting to build our budget for next year, that um we bring forward the cuts that we've now been discussing for two years. Originally, when I presented um the second interim, our goal was to stay at uh nine, just, just under ten percent, and that was with making one point two million dollars of budget cuts, which I brought up, we did not make. So that dropped our unrestricted reserves even lower. So we're well ama- well above the three percent the state requires, and the county of six point five percent, but it is something that we'll want to be mindful, um, especially in this economy, as we are looking at the possible of cash deferrals in um future years. So as a school district, um, the first for- the first thing that we have to pay are our retiree um health benefits, if we do have any retirees on those, and payroll is second. So when cash is, becomes questionable, um, it is something that, you know, you can borrow from your special funds, you can borrow from the county office, but that is a hard place to be in, and it starts a vicious cycle of borrowing. Um, so we do really always want to be mindful about making sure um that we have cash on hand to make payroll.
So what percentages are we, are, are our reserves at now?
Our unrestricted reserves are at just over uh seven, seven, they're in the seven percents. Um, I have to redo it, it's like seven and a half percent, so, yeah. I will say, the way to, because you look at the money, and I just told you we have thirty million dollars, and then I'm saying that we don't have that, so I would like to explain how we calculate our unrestricted, our ten percent reserves. Um, what we do is we take our expenditures, and we take, so we take the balance of our unrestricted, which is nine hundred and something thousand, you divide it by our expenditures of a hundred and twenty million dollars for the year, and you get the percentage that. So you can see, um, when we are discussing, because our restricted ending balances are highly restricted, they do not count towards the ten percent. Any other questions? Well, thank you for that, and for summarizing and reminding us all the math, all so much math, so much math. All right, and moving on, I think this is also you, Amanda, our fiscal year twenty-five enrollment update. All right, so tonight, um, we bring forward a twenty-four, twenty-five enrollment update, um, with good news. So, um, we used our enrollment as of the tenth day of school, um, but I wanted to quickly point out that our projection for last fiscal year was seven thousand two hundred and twelve. Our C-beds, which is the, the day that in October that we do most of our counts from, you also hear about it called about Fall One, we were at seven thousand one hundred and nine students. Our projections for this school year were seven thousand ninety-six students. That was through our um demographic and enrollment projections that we did last spring. And on our tenth day of school, we had seven thousand one hundred and thirty-seven students. I mean, most schools are talking about declining enrollment right now, so. Um, this is just a quick breakdown um by each school, um, that shows the grades. So I'm just going to briefly go over the totals. Um, at Grant Elementary, we projected three hundred and sixty-eight, and they have three hundred and eighty-eight. Um, and our staffing ratios show uh twenty-three point five to one in TK through three, and a ratio of twenty-nine point two for fourth through sixth grade. McDowell Elementary and our dual-language immersion schools. Um, moving forward, I do have a question. We have um elementary schools and charters that are on the same campus, so it, would you, the board prefer that they are presented like this as one school, or on two, as two separate things?
I like it as one school, yeah.
Perfect, okay, perfect. So we projected our enrollment at three hundred and thirty-eight, and we're at three hundred and sixty-six with the TK to three ratio of twenty-two point seven to one, and a fourth through sixth grade of twenty-nine point five to one. Um, McDowell, this is a combination of our dual-language elementary and our traditional track. Um, and so the staffing ratio is by the school, not program.
Makes sense, where did all those kindergartners come from?
Yeah.
Yeah, so do you have us, you know, this is a big variance for this particular school. We have a new uh junior high level dual DI, and, and now the elementary one is kicking gear here. So do we know that difference in the projection and the, and the actual, how many came from outside of our district, or how many came within our district?
So the best slide I could have made for you guys, I did not, is, I should have done it by district-wide for grade span. So I can definitely bring that back, I intended to add that um at the next meeting, to give a little bit more information. You'll see that some of our schools are down a little bit, some variances, but we've also been working on tracking um our in-going and outgoing in um inner-district transfers and things like that, to have a better understanding. Um, I think really with the way that this is our, how we're funded and doing the updated demographic studies, we'll continue to give us a better picture of where students are, where are they coming from, where are they going? Because I'm gonna show you something crazy about Casa at the end, which I'd like to know where all the twelfth graders came from.
Amanda? Amanda, so looking at McDowell, so we see that kindergarten, second and fourth grades really bumped up, is that because of the dual immersion, do you think, or is there any way to tell?
Yeah, so um kindergarten in particular, like we added, we had so much interest, and we had a waiting list. We opened up another section of kindergarten dual immersion, so that is the increase. You know, you can see that's, what is that, a twenty-four? So it's, it's, it's about, that's exactly about a, that, that one class. Um, the second grade, I'd have to go back and look about that twenty student variance on that, um, because we didn't open up an additional second-grade classroom there, um, so I'd have to look.
I know, so, um, one of the things the demographic study does is use five-year historical trends. So when you see low, sometimes it was historically in this district, we have a couple of grade levels at schools where twenty-five percent of the students left, and I would say maybe due to the dual-language immersion program, McDowell is not seeing the students leave that were once leaving the school. So for McKinley and Pax, um, our projection was five hundred and twenty-four students, and they are sitting at four hundred and eighty-two. And if you look right here, um, our kindergarten, we projected at fifty-one, and they're at thirty-four. So um with, the schools are geographically relatively close, so there probably likely are a lot of families that would like the DLI program. Um, the staffing ratio at McKinley is twenty-one point six to TK, for TK three, um, twenty-eight point five for fourth through sixth grade, and twenty-nine point five for the seventh and eighth grade program. McNear Elementary School, we projected three hundred and eighteen students. When we started the year with three hundred and forty-two, um, some of the families that have moved to McNear are from Valley Vista, which I'll show on a future slide. The staffing ratio at McNear Elementary is twenty-two point two to one in TK through third grade, and twenty-seven point four to one in fourth through sixth grade. Valley Vista Elementary School, we projected them to be uh a hundred and ninety-eight students, and on the tenth day of school, they were at a hundred and forty-nine. I would like to point out that as of yesterday, they were at a hundred and fifty-three. So, yes, but their ratio is sixteen point six um for TK through third, and fourth through sixth grade is at twenty-two to one. And one of the things that we've discussed at previous meetings in the budget is that with all of the conversations and things going on um at Valley Vista, we were not going to reduce the staff at the same rate that we might otherwise have. So this was a, a planned deficit, so, so to say.
Pengrove Elementary, um, we expected, projected them at four hundred and eighty-four and they're at four hundred and seventy-nine. Um, they're, the the charters year round are a little easy, the the students tend to come in kindergarten and stay. So does make it a little easier to project, but they are at twenty-three point eight to one for TK three and twenty-eight point two for fourth through sixth grade. Mary Collins at Cherry Valley, same thing, we projected them at four eighty-eight and they are at four ninety-one. Um, TK through third is a staffing ratio of twenty-three point eight to one. Fourth through sixth grade is thirty point five to one and seventh and eighth grade is at thirty-one point thirty-three to one. Petaluma Junior High School, we projected them at four hundred and fifty-eight and they were, they are at four hundred and fifty-nine. Yeah, and Kennelworth, um, we projected them at eight hundred and forty-three and they are at eight fifteen. Some of the students, um, quite a few of the students that are now at our DLI program at McDowell would have been Kennelworth students. So um, we showed the ratios for Petaluma Junior um two ways, because they do have three CTE sections that are not quite at the other junior highs. So they are at a twenty-three point eight seven to one or twenty-four point six to one with the traditional classroom and Kennelworth is at twenty-four point four eight to one. Casa Grande, we projected them at one thousand five hundred and ninety-one and on the tenth day of school, they were at one thousand six hundred and sixty-two with a staffing ratio of twenty-five point four to one. And Sonoma Mountain High School, we projected at twenty-three. They started the first day with twenty-two students and eleven to one ratio. And as you can see, we projected um twelfth grade at three hundred and fifty-eight and we had three hundred and ninety-six. Either we're not seeing the transfers out to um Ronert Park and Santa Rosa that we had traditionally seen. And also, um, this is another grade that historically we saw higher drop rates for twelfth grade. Also, you'll see um San Antonio has started the year with less students than anticipated. So Petaluma High School, we anticipated them to have one thousand one hundred and fifty-four and they are at one thousand one hundred and ninety-seven students with a ratio of twenty-five point twenty-six to one. And Carpe DM, um, we projected at twenty-two point one and they are at eighteen um with an eleven to one ratio. Um, they did, there, we had two more students originally on this slide that were concurrently enrolled. So the ratio was closer to ten. Um, Valley Oaks High School, we projected them at thirty-seven students and they are at thirty-five. This slide reads a little weird. Um, Valley Oaks is for ninth through twelfth grade. But last year we did have junior high there, so um the enrollment projections did carry those three students forward. Um, their ratio is nine point seven two to one. San Antonio, we projected them at seventy-two and they started the year at sixty-five, a ten point eight three to one um student to teacher ratio.
I imagine the uh alternatives usually grow during the year, as does Valley Oaks. Do they also grow as people go? I cannot do this. Okay.
So that could also be some of the increase to the twelfth grade. I like to think they just wanted to stay with us.
Is the virtual cat academy still with us or is that part of Valley Oaks? It is part of the independent.
And um our South County Consortium, um, we projected at one forty-seven and they, on the tenth day, they were at one sixty-seven. Today they were at one sixty-eight with twelve pending. So they're, they are really growing.
Except in twelfth grade where Casa did grow some.
Yes, I, yeah, we need to.
I don't, I don't know what I.
I know, I know. Yeah. So I will bring back um what the grade span, what we projected for kindergarten versus where we are. I think that that will show too. But other than that, are there any questions?
More students is always good news. Any?
I'm curious on the South County Consortium, how many of those are from, are transferred in from other districts?
That do not belong to the consortium? To P, yeah. Okay. Um, so all of the the high school would be PCS students. And then actually, I have that. No. None of the, they all stop at sixth grade? Okay, yes. I do.
Doesn't Cinnabar have seven, eight? I don't know. Does anyone know? Yeah, okay. I think so.
So, um, oh, that's pretty cool. Be for service here we go. Forty students are Petaluma City Elementary and seventy-two are Petaluma High School District. It's a hundred and twelve. Yeah, the second largest is Old Adobe. Um, so I mean, I can just read. Cinnabar has three students in the program. Dunham has zero, Liberty has three, Old Adobe has forty-one, Two Rock has three, WA has nine, Wilmar has four, and then City Elementary forty and um Petaluma City is seventy-two. And this equals one seventy-five, because this is the bill back that I'm looking at from the board meeting today. It was not the tenth day of school, so I realize the numbers don't quite, they change every day, which makes it super fun. Yeah, so the majority are our students.
Ava, do you feel like there are a lot more seniors this year? Has it, have you noticed any big?
No.
Yeah, no, not like a bunch of kids you suddenly don't recognize or anything?
Not. Sorry to play on. It's such a big school that it's like when there's new people, you don't even notice. Which is probably not as good to think, because you should be knowing people at school. But it's like, there's just a lot of people all around you. There's definitely like new faces in all of my classes, like one or two. Yeah. But it's, I don't know, it's like not unfamiliar really.
Thank you. Yeah. Alright, any other questions or thoughts? Alright. Yeah, we like more students. So, so awesome. Um, moving on, we'll do comments from the public on special recognition, reports, presentations, as well as non-agendized items. So I will read all of my fun stuff about public comment. Under Government Code, Section five four nine five four, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized item period. That period is about to happen. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments from the public will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a three-minute per person limit or a twenty-minute limit per subject matter. Commenters may not cede their time to others. So with that being said, if you have public comment on anything not on the agenda or special recognitions, reports, and presentations, please bring a card up to Bree. I will gather them all and sort everybody kind of by category. And then based on the number, I do quick math and make sure that we can meet the twenty-minute limit. Otherwise, it will be less than three minutes per person, but doing some quick math right now, I think will be good. We don't accept public comment online and haven't for about a year now. Um, someone, Eric, your pub, it just says public comment, not on the agenda. What do you want to talk about? Perfect, thank you. Alright. Um, so I have three that go in this time period, so you all get your full three minutes. Dave has the beautiful timer up there and I will call up William first.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the public. Um, thank you for uh giving me the time. I want to start out by saying to the members of the board, really, thank you for all you do. It's not easy to run a hundred and twenty-seven million dollar business when you don't know what your revenue sources are going to be. So I appreciate it. To the student representatives, I think it's great that y'all are here. It really is. What a, what a great thing. I wish something like that would have been around when I was a kid. Um, I come before you tonight as one of the coaches at Petaluma High School and also a parent of a junior at Petaluma High School. Um, I'm the assistant water polo coach, I'm also a volunteer uh coach of the swim team. I've been doing the swimming for about three years and water polo for the two years we've had it. Um, and what I want to address is uh the district recently kind of changed its transportation policy on what was allowed to happen for extracurricular uh transportation for all extracurricular events, not just sports. But my understanding is whether it's banned, ASB, kind of whatever. Um, there's some really good parts to it, not letting the students drive outside the city limits. Couldn't be more supportive of that. I think it's great. Um, some of the things that changed though, that are going to take, they're going to take opportunities away from from our students, unfortunately. I don't think that was your intention. I don't think enough research was done on how much this was actually going to cost. I appreciate that we're pretty fiscally responsible around here. There was a lot of discussion about that before this. Um, not allowing parents of other kids. So like I can't let my kid go with somebody else outside that twenty-two mile radius. Makes it really tough for some of the smaller teams to be able to get our students to their, I'm going to speak on athletics, but anything on the events in general. I know there, what I remember from the coaches meeting, there was about forty thousand dollars kind of budgeted that for that for Petaluma High School total. I believe the best estimate was it would be about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year just for athletics, not taking band into account, not taking any of the other extracurriculars into account. I think it's a great idea, but I think the implementation needs to be slowed down and maybe rethought about. Uh, and and I look at it from this perspective. As a parent, I'm taking my coach shirt off now and just be speaking as a parent. If it's okay with me, if my kid goes with XYZ parent and I say that, then I should be good enough for the board, because that's my right as a parent to go, I'm okay with my son riding with this person for this event. I think you took that out of parents' hands, probably with a lot of good reason, but I I think it's going to hurt our students in the long run. But I'll concede my thirty seconds.
Thank you very much, William. Next up, Eric.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the public. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm not the speaker, my colleague is, so I'm going to just read my notes. My name is Eric Hoffman. I'm entering my tenth year as the Petaluma High School swim coach. I have nine seasons coaching so far and two seasons of both boys and girls water polo as the head coach. On June twenty-fifth, uh, the board passed on consent changes to the transportation policy thirty-five forty-one point one. Policy change, which came without an implementation plan, is unfunded or vastly underfunded and is logistically unsupportable by the Petaluma City Schools. Specifically, the major change to the public, to the policy prohibits parent drivers for trips further than twenty-two miles. Speaking only on the effects on athletic programs, Petaluma High School and Casa Grande High School are in the Vine Valley Athletic League, which includes four Napa County schools, all more than twenty-two miles from Petaluma. Where transportation of students is concerned, athletics for extracurriculars is probably the, has the largest impact by a large factor. If this board had discussed this for ten minutes rather than passing it on consent with no discussion, they might have realized this. Failing to pull out a map of the Athletic League where the travel will take place earns the district a failing grade for not completing their homework. A quick estimate of the cost of bus transportation for Petaluma High School teams only for league games is a hundred and ten thousand. This is athletics only, is far less than the full estimated cost if non-league games, tournaments, and the like are included. This is one school and does not consider activities such as marching band, drum line, FFA, ASB, academic field trips, et cetera. The forty thousand dollars that we've, we understand is a lot, it is going to be very, very much overspent. Inserting the seemingly random distance of twenty-two miles into an existing policy might make a more cynical person suspect uh that there's a preordained outcome for this. The uh slipping a significant policy change into a vaguely worded consent agenda item does not lessen that suspicion. I would say the district really needs to pump the brakes on implementation of this short-sighted policy amendment until there's a plan to support it. And one, like my colleague, I really support the idea of buses for our kids. I've come here before and spoke on that. I I support that one hundred percent. I just saw the fiscal picture. I'm not sure it's in the books right now. Um, if it were, I would support one hundred percent bus transport all the time. I don't want kids driving. I'd prefer them all to be in one place and one time. I just don't think the money is there and I don't think that was well thought out. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And next up, Tony.
Thank you. Nice to see all of you. I really appreciate it. And it's funny how you can be so nervous talking effectively to your neighbors, but here you go. Um, and I also wanted to thank you for your work. I really appreciate all that you do for the kids and for the schools and having been on PTA and other things at different schools. I really understand the pressure that you're all under to make the right decisions and things like that. Um, and I'm also going to read my notes, so don't forget what I'm trying to say. But one of the things I'm really excited about, I have two kids at Petaluma High, one junior and one freshman, is that this is the first time in a long time they've gotten to try a brand new sport. So my son is a junior, he's just joined the water polo team, which is brand new. And in this era where if you haven't played since you were four, you can't to do anything. Um, it's really, really exciting. It's so exciting. And my son is playing, my other son is playing football for the first time ever. They both play lacrosse. There are so many great opportunities at the school and so much of it are because of what the coaches do virtually um as volunteers and what so many of us parents put into making those programs run. I manage this, the lacrosse program for the coaches and do all of the organizing with the volunteers and things. So like, we do a lot to make these things happen. Um, and I don't pretend at all to understand all the factors that went into the decision, because I I don't know. And that's usually the case on the other side, if you're not sitting at the table. Um, but it's having really unintended consequences, which are really a bummer. And I think one of the things I'd really like to highlight is that in this era of really rampant mental health issues and screen addictions, sports and all of the other things that buses are needed for are so critical. They provide so many opportunities in addition to what the schools are providing under the guise of the schools. And and this whole quandary of not being able to get to these games especially limits smaller sports programs. So I'm not too worried about football, probably not worried about baseball, but these small oper, smaller sport opportunities are really hard to come by. And there's no way, especially with this short notice, that a team like ours can even raise the funds. And last year, they didn't even have enough players to have subs. This year we do, but that's not going to be enough to raise money for the buses. Um, so I really just want to focus actually on the health benefits of all these things that these outside activities provide and urge you to please make it easier for us to, as parents, get our kids there and get our friends' kids there, because we're willing to do it. It, like, like Coach Eric said, we'd prefer that they're on a bus too, and I love that kids can't drive, that hundred percent. But it's really, really limiting us and it puts so much unnecessary stress on all of us to figure out how we're going to get our kids there. But I just want to focus on all the beautiful things that sports can do for us. Healthy, strong mind and body, leadership development, communication skills, learning how to handle wins and losses, healthy competition, teamwork, grit and growth mindset, something really important to PCS. Fun and joy camaraderie, time management, keeps kids out of trouble. It gives them a label that they're proud of being an athlete. It gives them a place to go and a place to belong. Time off screens and the list goes on. Thank you very much. Please make it easier for us to get our kids to sports and outside activities.
Thank you, Tawny. Thank you all for coming to speak on this issue. We're not allowed to respond, but I will say if you want to see more of an official presentation and discussion, I believe the March 26th meeting has a lot more. And there are many other meetings where we discussed it before it was passed. Heather, my dear, your item is actually on the agenda, so I'm not going to call on you just yet. And we will move on to take a five minute break. That's what we will do. At 7:18, we will come back. We are reconvening at 7:19 and we are moving on to adoption and approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I second.
All in favor of adopting and approving the agenda, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Moving on to report on activities and correspondence of school board members. Let's see, okay. Board trustees attended back to school nights at Grant, McDowell, Kennelworth, Casa and Petaluma High, as well as the Valley Vista Walk Audit for the Safe Routes to Schools, a Safe Roots to Schools, a beginning of the year briefing with the McNear principal and parents, the PCS Science Environmental Literacy and Climate Action Committee, the PCS Visual and Performing Arts Committee, a PHS football game, a KJHS basketball game, the California Association of African American Superintendents and Administrators Conference, agenda review and a meeting with the Sheet Metal Workers Union. Does anyone have any of those items they would love to talk about? Yeah, go for it.
Just to the audience. And to everyone else, anyone who's here listening. Anyway, I did go to the, well, I've been kind of immersed in safe routes to schools. And so I just want to encourage everybody to, on October 9th, there is the International Walk and Roll. And there's really a push, when we had the walk and roll last May for all of our sites, Petaluma just like knocked it out of the park. We had, you know, like triple the amount of participation that we usually have and triple more than anybody else in the county. So we really want to go even more than that. And so they were really, the Safe Routes to School Task Force, of which we're a member, is really doing a push for this. If you go to their website, which is the Safe Routes to School, the Sonoma County Safe Routes to School, they have all kinds of things. And one of the things that really, they have maps where you can do bike trains. They have trainings. They have access to people who can, so if you know elementary school or even at, at high schools, where you'd like to, like meet someplace and then bike together so that you're safer. Or if you want to walk together, things like that. We're just trying to get people used to realizing that they might be able to walk or ride their bikes maybe once a week or at least once a month. So the International Walk and Roll, it's actually sponsored, I think it's AAA. And so there's, they have swag and stuff like that. I don't think they have hats. I think they have pins and stickers.
Maddie, do you, are there adult volunteers needed for like elementary kids that are walking?
Yes, always, always.
And where can you sign up for that?
So I would go through, probably through Safe Routes to School and Christina Panza. So go through that and she'll get you in contact with the school. Most of the schools have a rep and so they, and they particularly on these big days, they have walk and roll days every month. But these big ones is what they really, where you get, you know, pins and stickers and pencils. And, and so, and it's really fun. And it's also just kind of giving people the realization that it's possible to walk, that it's possible. And also to get volunteers to help out with these walking school buses and, and bike trains. And they have volunteers that are willing to train, you know, people who maybe have never done a bike train and they're, but they're bikes, bicyclists, and they really want to try this. They have people in the, in the community who are part of different organizations who are, know how to do this. Know how to, you know, train somebody or they can help you even be there that day. So and Christina can get you in touch with all of those people. Yes. Okay. I guess that's enough.
We love it. We love Safe Routes to Schools. We love keeping our students and staff and families safe and the more demand for bike lanes, the more the city has to do it. Yeah, that's not our problem. I mean, it's our problem, but it's, it's on them. Any other updates from the adult board members? If not, moving on to reports and activities and correspondence of our student board members for their very first time. Student board members attended a Petaluma High football game, a Petaluma High volleyball game, Petaluma's Club Rush, Petaluma's Back to School Night, Petaluma's Senior Sunrise, Casa's first interact club meeting of the year and Casa's first debate team meeting of the year. And I'm sure there's so many more things you all did. In addition, those are just like the little highlights. If there's anything, any of the three of you would like to add or share about any of those, you're welcome to.
Today was the first rehearsal for Casa's production of Little Woman. And we're very excited. Opening night is going to be on November 8th. And you should definitely come because it's a great cast and it's going to be amazing.
How long is it going to be running? Is it two weekends?
Yes, for both or all three nights and then Sunday, like afternoons. Friday, Saturday night and then Sunday matinee for both weekends. Absolutely.
Great. We love it. All the beginning of the year activity, all the firsts are always exciting. Uh huh. Great. And now we will move to comments from the public on consent items. So that's anything under 13. So if you have comments on the consent agenda, please bring up a beautiful little like mauve lavender periwinkle card. Mauve, okay. We've decided. Seeing no one rushing the stage, do I hear a motion about the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All right. Any, now that the consent agenda is on the table, are there any questions or comments about any of the items on the consent agenda?
I was happy to, along with some of the public comments, to see that all the overnight field trip requests were granted, a district bus. And so it doesn't seem like it's been an issue, at least for them. I don't know if you want to talk more about that process because I think that there was a concern about the field trips, but we're seeing that it's happening. So.
On the bus for the overnight field trips? Yeah. So when a bus is needed for any school event, they always go through our transportation department. We have an online platform that a request is created. And then either we first try to fill it in-house. We had 16 sporting events this week and all were filled by our in-house drivers and yay. Yes. And if they are unable to accommodate that, then the transportation department is the one that goes out to bid for, to look for the allowable charter uses. So our, this one is a brand new platform. We had a different platform last year and so far I haven't heard any complaints. We'd love to see that.
I mean, FFA is one of our most popular programs for the kids. So I'm just glad to see that they're feeling like they can access their activities even with the new policy. So thank you, Amanda.
Anything else on consent? Hearing none, I called a question. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. And now we'll take comments from the public on action items. So if you have comment on any of the action items under 15, please feel free to rush the stage with the mauve card. Hearing no pitter patter of footsteps, I'm moving on to the action items, starting with administration and human resources. Resolution 2425-9 of us honoring the contributions of administrators to quality education and declaring the week of October 13th through 19th, 2024 as week of the school administrator. Ellen and Joanna, I'm going to make you two fight over who wants to read it into the record since you both have admin credentials.
Actually has a clear credential. I'll let her read it.
Oh, okay. Do you want me to pull it up on mine?
Okay, I'll read it. Okay. Um, oh wait, I gotta make that a little bit bigger. Hand for my glasses.
Scroll over everywhere.
25 on. Okay. Whereas leadership matters for California's public education system and the more than six million students it serves. And whereas school administrators are passionate lifelong learners who believe in the value of quality public education. And whereas the title school administrator is a broad term used to define many education leadership posts in both certificated and classified capacities. And whereas most school administrators began their careers as teachers, the average administrator has served in public education for more than a decade. Most of California's superintendents have served in education for more than 20 years. Such experience is beneficial in their work to effectively and efficiently lead public education and improve student achievement. And whereas public schools operate with lean management systems, across the nation, public schools employ fewer managers and supervisors than most public and private sector industries, including transportation, food service, manufacturing, utilities, construction, publishing and public administration. And whereas research shows great schools are led by great principals and great districts are led by great superintendents. And whereas the state of California has designated the second full week in the month of October of each year as a week of the school administrator and education code 44015.1. And whereas the future of California's public education system depends upon the quality of its leadership. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and the Petaluma City Elementary School District and the Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts hereby proclaims the week of October 13th through 19th, 2024 as week of the school administrator, commending all school leaders for the contributions they make to successful student achievement.
Awesome. So now that we have read it into the record, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
I second.
All right. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Thank you to all our school administrators. Hopefully none of you are watching right now. Hopefully you're enjoying your lives, but when you eventually re-watch this later, other than our admin in the room, all of you, hopefully you're paying attention. No. I will call the question. All in favor of approving the resolution? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Hearing none, resolution number nine of this school year passes. And we'll move on to business services. Of all, not all in favor. Wow. Do I hear a motion about the unaudited actuals?
I move to approve the unaudited actuals.
I second.
Any last questions or comments? As a reminder, this is what we reviewed with Amanda first on the agenda. So all of the actual math for the last school year before the accountant people come double check all of our math. Right? No? Okay. All in favor of approving the unaudited the actuals, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we have approved our unaudited actuals and we will see them audited by January. And then we'll move on to another resolution. Approval of the resolution of the Board of Education adopting the GAN limit. First, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the GAN limit.
All right, Amanda, can you remind us what the GAN limit is and why we need to adopt it every single year?
Yes. All right. Tonight we bring forward resolution to adopt the GAN limit for fiscal year 24 and fiscal year 25 budget. The GAN limit, which was established in 1979 via proposition four restricts the tax revenue that California state and local governments can spend. The limit is adjusted annually for factors like inflation and population growth. This limit was designed to prevent excess government spending and ensure that taxpayer money is used efficiently. If revenues exceed this limit, the excess must be refunded to taxpayers or spent on education. In our unaudited actuals report, you will see that we've calculated our compliance with the GAN limit. We are currently within the allowable limit indicating that our spending aligns with state requirements. This is critical because exceeding the limit could lead to financial penalties or the need for adjusting our budgets.
So if we spent too much on education, or if we made too much revenue, we'd have to spend on education. Darn, what a problem to have. Yeah.
Yeah. So what happens if we don't pass it?
We get in trouble.
Um, yeah. I, I am the steward of these funds. You are the ones who approve.
They want us to approve a limit because they don't give us enough money. And so we're saying, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, if there, if you do spend in excess of what the GAN limit populates, there are reasons that you can.
The word is not coming to me every meeting.
For it to reduce the amount. Um, I actually do not know of a school district that has never not passed the GAN limit. So.
Let's not find out. Let's not find out.
Yeah, I, I don't think we've ever come close to hitting the GAN limit. Honestly, they don't give us enough money to get us really close to it. And so city councils have to do this, counties have to do this, every municipality or local government has to do this. Man, 1978, 1979, we're not great for public schools.
Proposition 13 was the Jarvis scam.
I know. I know. That's what I'm saying. I wasn't allowed to vote back then, so it's not my fault. So the resolution was, is on the table. So I called a question. All in favor of the resolution adopting the GAN limit? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. No, she said aye. We're good. It is officially approved unanimously. So we'll move on to our second reading and approval of the new board, new board policy firearms on school grounds. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the new board policy 3515.7.
Second.
And this has not changed since we reviewed it a few weeks ago. No, it's the same. Yep. So this will soon be officially approved, which means adults can't bring firearms onto our school campus unless they are literally law enforcement. Well, kids already couldn't. But now the adults also can't. Um, so any other comments or questions? Did you, okay. Yeah. Yep. That's how we all felt when Maddie brought it up. We were all like, no, that has to exist. That's a, that's a crazy question to ask. And then no, it was not a crazy question to ask to your reader. All right. All in favor of the new board policy, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. That board policy is officially passed. Yay. Next up, approval of the Drayling Turonis. Next up, approval of the Drayling Terronas Architecture Facilities Assessment and Master Planning Services. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the DTA facilities assessment.
I second.
All right, so Amanda and I talked a little bit about this before. We could have put it on the consent under all the contracts, but since it is a bigger price point. Um, we did wanna put it up for discussion, so this is, this, the services for the master plan as we've been discussing. They, they are gonna charge us for that master plan, it turns out. So.
Unfortunately, yes, and there's quite a bit of work that goes into a master plan. Um, especially, we are not starting with the current master plan, so uh, DTA or any company that would do a master, facilities master plan is starting from scratch. Scratch, excuse me. I want to point out that the fees also include the consulting for engineers um, for technical assistance and planning. Which, um, in some master plans, they may appear lower, but then all of the subcontracting you pay separately. So this also includes time for community engagement and, um, a pre-bond report along with coming back to the board meeting. Other than that, it's a pretty standard process for each of our sites.
I was really impressed by the fact that they're gonna do community outreach. Cause when I first saw that price tag, I went, what? But then as I read through the whole thing, it's pretty impressive what they do.
Um, I've had the opportunity, as I mentioned before, to work with the ETA at another school district and one of the things, um, about this company is that, um, that they understand the importance of community output and, um, the importance of what needs to happen when we're spending public funds, taxpayer funds, and, um, so much so uh, if the current bond measure that is gonna be on the ballot passes, they also look at plans for long-term committees to ensure once plans are passed that the, um, what has taken place in the facilities master plan continues through, they're called owners committees, um, which we could talk about at another meeting.
Very cool. And they're the ones that have been doing that initial out, the outreach on sites at the end of the last school year, right?
Yes, they did our pre-bond planning report.
Perfect. Yeah, they seem to be very great to work with. I felt like when they've presented, I understood what they were talking about, which hasn't always been the case with construction things. All right, any other questions or comments?
Uh, just quickly, can you remind me the, uh, the timeframe of this contract? I'm looking for it, I was just, uh,
I,
reminding here.
Yep, I do have a I'm trying to They did include, which is not on that, a draft schedule. And of course, I cannot read, but, um, the implementation of the plan hopefully would be, um, December, January timeframe, frame, full implementation.
To have a master plan together, is that what you're saying?
Yes, a co- completed one. Yes, but it will be in time.
We need it whether or not the bond skipped.
We do need it regardless, um, because there are still, you know, could be other opportunities for state matching funds, but, um, if the bond passes in November, there's, there's a process for depositing those funds into our bank, or into our accounts, our bank account. So, um, likely that cash in hand would not be until that timeframe anyways. It doesn't magically show up on
Yeah.
the next day.
Nothing magically happens in education, it turns out. I, I don't like that.
Then we get the fund of Moody's ratings and all of those next steps.
Perfect. All right, I'll call the question, all in favor of approving the assessment and master planning services? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Moving on to ed services. So this is our second reading of the Student Board Member Handbook. Can I have a motion to get it on the table?
I move to approve the Student Board Member Handbook.
I second.
All right, so this is a handbook that we drafted with input of past student board members. I'm curious if any of this current student board members have any thoughts about the Student Board Member Handbook? Or if, yeah, Tony, if you wanna talk about what's been.
I know, um, um, it's, um, it's something that, uh, that I'm hoping this year you know, through review with the current student members to add more or to provide more feedback so that we can continually update and, and make it better. The goal is really to simplify it enough and make it easier to read for, for students that are interested in participating as student member or the current student, student board members. Uh, understanding their role and response, general roles and responsibilities and, and processes.
One thing I noticed that's in that and that we have not been doing was taking advisory votes from our student board members before we vote on probably student serve, or all of it, I guess. Um, I don't know if we're gonna start doing that, but it's in the book.
I think we had talked about doing it over like bigger contentious issues. I'm very open to interpretation, especially based on what the student board members want. Once we approve and pass it.
I just wanted to add that this is gonna be very helpful.
Yeah.
I have talked to a lot of people about like my position here and a lot of people in my school don't even know what it is, what I do. I barely, I'm gonna be honest, I barely knew if I was gonna do it when I came in here. I obviously asked Jaden a lot of questions about it, um, just cause he was in my ASB class, but this is gonna be, I think it's gonna get a lot more participation for people running. Yeah, I heard. I, I love it.
Yeah, so hopefully once we approve it, we can get it out to all of you to peruse in all of your free time. I know all of you have so much free time. Um, and we can always come back and make edits and stuff, but at least you'll have something to start with, which is more than we can say for the last three classes of student board members. Any other thoughts or questions or comments before we approve the Student Board Member Handbook? All right, I'll call the question, all in favor. Let's take an advisory vote of the youth first on this one. Uh, student board members, how do you vote on approving a, a handbook? You could say aye or no, or you can abstain. Amazing, okay, adults, now you've seen how the youth feel. So I call the question, all in favor of approving the Student Board Member Handbook? Aye. Amazing, well unanimous all around. We love to see it, but we officially have a Student Board Member Handbook. All right, moving on to approval of resolution number eleven. To fully comply with the requirements of ed code regarding sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. And so this is what we had opened the public hearing with. Tony is, uh, wait, first, can I get a motion to get it on the table?
I move to approve the resolution.
All right, Tony, is there anything else we need to know?
No, this is just part of what we do annually, um, to ensure, um, that we are sufficient in our search materials if sites certify that they have uh, everything they need and there's a public hearing and a board resolution, uh, that, um, solidifies that.
Perfect.
Can I ask a question? How do we ensure that the sites have what they need? Cause like, you know, we go back to school night, there's some different things that we heard this time about adequate, um, equipment in classrooms. So how do we actually ensure that we have those and that the teachers have what they need for each group of students?
So, you know, we, we communicate, um, frequently as much as possible to the site administration that, you know, um, whatever that they need when they go through and check classrooms or ask their teachers, like whatever they need before they um, certify anything is to let us know if you're missing anything. Uh, and to clarify, if there's need to be any clarification around things. I think there is some, sometimes there is, you know, with new teachers or new, um, administrators, there might be some confusion around what we mean by sufficient see of instructional materials. A lot of our materials are licenses that we, that students have access to, and so sometimes they're not aware that they're looking for something physical when it's actually a license, so. Um, and I know like with lab sciences, those can be a little bit more, um, ambiguous because what are the standards of lab equipment? That's needed to run a, a lab. So we just, you know, ask that if there's something that you think you need or is missing, let us know, because we we are obligated to and we will fulfill all of those requirements. It's not, it's not a question of, of anything other than, is that, if that's what you need to run your class, we'll, we'll provide it for you. And so they go through that process every year. They check with their, their understandings, they check with their staff. They walk through classrooms and they certify at their sites. And we use that to, to verify if, if in the, if we find out that that isn't the case or they're still missing something, we automatically go and, and purchase it for them to make sure that they have it.
Um, Tony, I also heard at back to school nights, especially like in art classes, which are consumable stuff. They're really struggling. They don't have a budget. At least that's what I heard.
Yeah, and, um, I don't think arts is a part of the sufficiency instructional materials. Regardless of that, we should be providing them what they need for, for any classroom. And, uh, and that's what we'll be discussing at the VAPA committee meeting is to ensure that we have, we have a lot of funds, Prop twenty-eight, we have arts mus- arts music instruction materials, Black Grant. There is not a, it shouldn't be an issue of not having, uh, sufficient, um, funding for the, for the arts.
And staff need to know that we're not psychic and attempt to tell their site admin or, and or district admin if they are in need of things.
Right.
Yeah, I've heard these things at, uh, back to school night also, and I, I think a part of it is we've been, you know, for decades in this culture of scarcity that it's become traditional to ask parents for donations at back to school night. And we need to curb that and say, we will provide what you need for public education. And that needs to be the message that our teachers are telling our parents too, including on transportation. We will provide that.
And I think also admin, they need to understand that every department needs a budget.
And does that come from that? But, oh, someone was gonna say.
I would just like to basically add that typically at the high school level, you have the department chairs that, uh, take the lead and responsibility to inventory what they have available, not only in terms of materials, but also lab equipment. And then they submit that list. Once they get their budget, then they go through the process of requesting what they need. And I'm assuming, Tony, that that's the same typical process that they use in Petaluma City Schools?
Um, I think every site might have a different process, but yes, generally the, you know, the, this, the, the budgets they, they should, they receive should be above and beyond what we should already be providing, so. Um, you know, uh, I think what's important is to make sure they understand like, um, whatever you're receiving as your budget isn't meant for instructional materials. It's meant for additional things that you might need to help with your class supplemental materials or things like that. And I don't thi- I think we can over communicate that to make sure, especially since we have a lot of new administrators and new staff. To make sure that that's continuously communicated. And in that, in that general process is, is my understanding how it's done. I know some, some administration go above and beyond and go to every single classroom and ask and check, um, as well. Um, but the high schools typically would go through their department chairs.
Thank you, okay. No, we only read the fluffy emotional ones, the good ones. Sorry, it's true. Um, I call the question, resolution eleven about the sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials. All in favor, everybody, all, all eight of us can vote. Um, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that resolution passes. Next up, we have resolution twenty-four, twenty-five dash twelve, doing the same thing just for the elementary schools. Um, I'm going to have an amendment, but first I need someone to put it on the table.
I move to, oh, go ahead, Maddie.
Okay, I move to approve resolution two, four, two, five, dash, twelve. For
Yep.
Elementary, no, yeah, elementary school, second.
All right, I move to amend the title to say the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Cause right now it says twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three school year.
Oh.
I think that's just a typo. I don't remember seeing it as a typo on the resolution. But we might as well.
Let's see if it's on there.
On the agen- on the printed agenda, it's the wrong year.
It's, it's correct. It's correct on the actual resolution.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, okay, so the printed one is, yeah.
Okay, then it's just the printed one. I, um, remove my own amendment. I rescind my amendment.
Oh, it looks like the date is wrong on the resolution, but when I scrolled to the bottom, it has the correct year. So it's saying September twenty-sixth. Thank you, Amanda, saying September twenty-sixth. What's today, September tenth?
I don't, I don't, yeah, it's okay, no, it says September tenth, that's a great.
First on the actual resolution it though.
Yeah, that's all that really. Oh, yeah, this is, y'all, this is last year's resolution. Um, do we need to approve it before September fifteenth or anything?
We can bring it to the next one.
Okay, let's bring the elementary to the next one. Uh, I move to table, um, this resolution indefinitely.
Second.
All in favor of tabling this indefinitely?
Aye.
All right, that just means I killed it. I've never got to kill anything at a board meeting before, okay? This is really exciting for Roberts Rules fans everywhere. Okay, I'm over it, we're good. Um, so yeah, we need the correct years. Uh, sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials next time, but.
Bring it out, date one.
Yeah. Oh, okay. It's really exciting stuff, student board members. I don't think you just this is, this is why you stay late. It's not, it's not even eight yet. Okay, we're good, okay. Okay, so moving on to student services, cause we haven't heard very much from Esmeralda tonight. Um, that's the second reading of the, of the two things. We've talked about it many times, so we are not gonna hear very much more from Esmeralda. Can I have a motion for the second reading of board policy administering medications and monitoring health conditions?
I move to approve the second reading of BP five, one, four, one, point, two, one.
I second.
All right, Esmeralda, has anything drastically changed since two weeks ago? Nope. And this is just getting us up to date with CSBA's model language, so we are gonna have good board policy. Any questions or comments? We discussed this one last time. Call the question, all in favor of approving this board policy? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the board policy passes. So move on to the administrative regulation. It's just the, the different side of the same coin. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve AR five, one, four, one, point, two, one.
I second.
All right, anyone, I'm not gonna phrase it like that, all in favor of administrative regulation five, one, four, one, point, two, one? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Cool. It would've been really weird if someone voted for the board policy and against administrative regulation, but you never know. And so now, Heather, thank you for your patience. It is comments from the public on discussion and information items. Your item is on the discussion information items. If anyone, there is no other public. So Heather, if there are any other discussion information items you wanna comment on, you can fill out another card to do another one. But otherwise, I'm just gonna call you up for your public comment for three, up to three minutes.
Can you hear me? Okay, it, I didn't hear myself. Thank you all, uh, for always being here and showing up and everything you guys do for our community. I'm Heather Gallagher. I am the CASA parent who addressed the Petaluma City School Board three and a half months ago in May regarding the need for the school district to demand that Crown Castle and T-Mobile immediately turn off and remove the illegally installed and operated T-Mobile and Crown, and Crown Castle cell tower from the Casa Grande High School grounds. In the month since our group, I came up with a group of people in the meeting in May, um, since our group of community members stood up and addressed the Petaluma City School Board. There have been numerous emails back and forth between all parties. I have learned from the school district's responses to my PR A request that the school district's attorneys have notified Crown Castle and T-Mobile in writing several times that the school district has terminated the cell tower lease and demanded that that the school district has terminated the cell tower lease and demanded that the cell tower be removed. The school district has provided Crown Castle and T-Mobile with the legal and factual reasons why the cell tower is illegal. And why the school district is legally entitled to terminate the lease. Crown Castle and T-Mobile have responded in writing that they do not agree. And they are taking no steps whatsoever to turn off the tower or remove it. I appreciate that the Petaluma City School Board agreed earlier this spring that the cell tower at Casa Grande High School must be deactivated and removed as soon as possible. And directed the school district's attorneys to make that happen. The attorneys have notified Crown Castle and T-Mobile that the school district has terminated the lease, but Crown Castle and T-Mobile refuse to recognize the termination. Now it seems that the school district's attorneys have taken no further action in response to Crown Castle and T-Mobile's refusal. This is unacceptable and too much time has passed. Please provide us with an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. All right. Moving on to our first discussion and information item. Board member committee signups. Um, Jason, is this you or Esmeralda or Bree or who wants to? Who wants to take this hot potato? It's not a hot potato. It's the opposite. Yay. Perfect, and I have it pulled up here.
Yeah, I just, um, Bree, is snack committee still meeting? Is that why they're or?
I didn't see it. Did I just run right over it?
Explain the difference between the board committee and the other ones? I mean, turn on your mic and speak up.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't, the snack committee, I don't think is a committee that has a board member. It's not a board committee. It is a, one of our many district committees that you're welcome to attend.
Okay, yeah, because I go and I was just curious. But what about the nutrition committee?
That's the same line, girl.
But that, but
That's the same one.
Why does that not have, it's not a subcommittee?
Yeah, I don't understand.
Yeah, you can just go. It's just.
Just go have a good time, eat some snacks.
Except we can't have more than two people there.
Okay, Maddie and Ellen can keep going to snack. Okay, um is anyone dying to be on budget advisory? I am. No, I am. I'm not being sarcastic. I love.
So who was on it last year?
Sheldon and you. No.
I know. You have to keep.
Yeah. No. Right, yeah, that, yeah, literally. It's positions, not people. There are dates on there. It's September, yes, you guys printed it before it was done. That's not my fault. It's September nineteenth, October seventeenth, November twenty first, January ninth, and January sixteenth. We don't know.
At four thirty?
Perfect. Does anyone know what day of the week that is? Thursdays four thirty to six o'clock with me and Amanda. Any, anyone else want to join? Any student board members? Want to join? Budget? So, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a lot more. You don't need to pick now. I'm just going through. I think they're alphabetical.
Give your opinion on how the funds are spent or give your input.
Well, and we're gonna have to make cuts this year, so student input on how if and how cuts are made. Yeah, I'll read them all first and then you don't need to decide now. It's not, it can always change too. This is just our chance to discuss it. So there is the budget advisory committee, the climate action committee, the continuous improvement committee. If you don't know what that means, that's okay. It was formerly the professional growth and K through twelve curriculum committees. And the LCAP committee, which is the Local Control Accountability Plan Committee. The CTE advisory committee, so advising our CTE pathways. The safety and school climate committee. So it's different than climate action. It's like climate feelings and safety, not climate. Um, arts and music, which is new, the cellphone committee, the alternative education task force. So those are our eight nine, nine committees. So, so everyone should be on two. Well, let's do it verbally so that we can just have Bree type it, but, okay. We don't have to decide it all on that, but I want to get the people that want to do the things that they want to do, get, give them their first dibs. All right, so I'm gonna just go in order this way unless somebody really like wants to fight each other. Sheldon? Sheldon, what's your top pick? Yeah, what's your, what's, who's your favorite kid? What's your, your favorite committee? Climate action. All right. Maddie, what is your first choice? Yeah, go for it. Ellen, what's your first choice? I need one first choice. That's how first works. It will go, we'll have a second round, a third, okay, arts and music for Ellen, please. Uh, Joanna, what's your first choice? LCAP. LCAP for Joanna. Okay, student board members, do any of you have a dying desire? Um, you all can be on as many or as few as you want. You all can have multiple of you, so you don't need to fight, but if you want to fight it's debate night. So go for it. Yeah. CTE is career technical education. So all of our different career pathways and like focusing on a lot more of that hands-on learning, like apprenticeships, all that good stuff. Anything and everything can really be CTE, frankly. Okay, I'll let the student board members mull it over a little more. Sheldon, do you have a second choice? All right, stick you on whatever. Maddie, do you have a second choice?
I, you can, I don't have another child.
Okay.
Would like to do, I could continue, but I
Okay, I'm.
Been on continuous improvement for like four.
Yeah, but I want what you want first and then we'll fill you in where needed.
I, I think maybe the um I'm kind of interested in that.
All right, can you put Maddie on alt ed? Um, I I want to be on CTE advisory. Me and, me and Dan are gonna hang out a bunch. It's gonna be great. Um, Ellen. All right, Ellen's second child is, sorry. Um, Joanna, do you have a second?
Okay, for the budget advisor.
Right, but is there another one you want? You, well, she just said you signed her up.
I'm not, well, okay, all ed task force.
All right. Perfect. So Sheldon, you have no more favorite children. Maddie, you have no more favorite children. Ellen, do you have any other favorite children? Perfect, that works for me. Not that matters if it works for me, but it does. I Okay, let's put Maddie on continuous improvement. I'm doing grownups first. I'm letting the, the student board members think about it.
You're doing CTE.
I'm doing CTE. Okay, Sheldon will be on CTE also. We'll figure out what it means. Uh, I want to make sure there's at least one adult board member on each one. There's at least one adult board member on everyone that we could do one more on cellphone or one more on arts and music or one more on school and uh, safety and school climate or one more on continuous improvement. Continuous improvement ones are all day ones though, so I'm not gonna do that one again.
There are a lot. Who's on the cellphone?
I think you.
Who's on the cellphone?
Ellen, do you want to join Ellen on that one?
No.
No.
I, 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 I mean, no, not, I, no, no, I don't. Yeah, the cellphone.
Bree, I'll put Olivia on, yeah. Okay, so I have Olivia on one, Daniel on one, and Ava on one. Yeah, that'll be awesome.
You're not gonna do all kids?
Yeah. One is plenty. Trust me, one will be plenty for now. You can always. And the thing is, so what the adults do and what you all are also welcome to do is if I know that I can't make one of my committee meetings, I'll text the whole board and be like, hey, can anyone go fill in for me? Because for us, the, we can't ever have more than three of us in a meeting, otherwise it becomes a board meeting. Oh, yeah, more than, yeah. The alligator without the thing on the bottom.
I can do the cellphone.
Okay, Joanna will be on cellphone. That's good. Um Is, is everyone, is arts and music still all day? Okay, I'll, you can add me to arts and music, Bree, please. Um, we're, they're very fun. They're a, I'm turning into my mother. Uh, yes, student board members, are there any second ones you want to be on? Or do you want to take, you know, ease your way in? Do you want to be on a second one?
Um, the CTE advisory committee?
Yeah.
That one.
Perfect. Yeah, the good news about this is you all can, like, all three of you can be on any of them. Um, because you don't have to follow the Brown Act. Yeah, so the, we have at least two adult board members on every committee, which is awesome, except for safety and school climate committee. Does anyone want to join Ellen on that one?
I can do that. I can try. I will be here for.
It's okay, and you're always allowed to miss a meeting. It's nice if you can text us and see if one of us can fill in for us adults, but or you all with each other, but um it's, yeah, there's also times where neither board member that's assigned can attend and the world does not implode. It doesn't. Wow, see, we did it, fam. Good job.
Nice.
Thank you, Bree, and everybody else who entered names.
Can you repeat them just so that we know for sure?
Yes, Bree will send it out in writing so that we don't have to read our scribbled notes.
So she's on this. Oh, that's great. I didn't hear that.
And you can always just go to one as like a one-off also, like if you know, student board members at least, if you know that there's something they're gonna be talking about that you're really interested in, you can always just go once. We have to kind of check more and be like, hey, Joanna, can I tap in and you tap out just so we don't violate the board Brown Act. Oh, my God. Or the board act. Don't violate the board. Um cool. All right, I think we did it. So, yeah, we'll move on to the first reading of a revised administrative regulation. What, the four, one, five, seven, four, two, five, seven, four, three, five, seven, all employee safety. Jason, what, what is this?
Well, so these are all um virtually identical administrative regulations. The first one is for a certificated, the second one for classified, the last one forty-three, fifty-seven was for administrative. And um a- as I mentioned in the description, we recently approved the workplace violence prevention plan. This uh has updates that address how we, how we implement that plan. It also had some additional updates with I which I outlined, and hopefully you could see the differences on those. They were all in, all the updates were in red. So pretty straightforward of with, with uh following up on those, on the plan that we brought forward a little while ago.
Yeah. Great. Any questions or comments? I'll take questions or comments on any of the three of them. I don't want to go through them individually. If we're being honest. We're always honest here. Despite what public commenters may imply. No, it, it looked great. It was super administrative regulation. It was super, that's what I'll say.
Riveting, right?
It was super. It was super. Yes, thorough. It's a very good word for it. All right. Speaking of being thorough, let's move on and talk about election guidelines. If you all don't know, there is an election coming up. November fifth, twenty twenty-four, our district voted to put two bonds on the ballot and we need to make sure that we are following all of the rules when it comes to our duties as board members and school employees' duties as a school employees, separate, entirely separate from the campaign and a- as always, the state has managed to pass some new laws somehow and since the last time we did this, which was not that long ago. So Amanda's gonna walk us through our friends at DWK's presentation so we can stay legal through election season.
Exactly. Thank you. So I had the opportunity to attend this webinar, which the timing couldn't be more perfect. So this is, um, I did want to attach the full slide deck, which is thirty-three slides, so I'm going to just briefly go over um and discuss what district resources can and cannot be used, what district employees can and cannot do and what you as elected officials can and cannot do for bond elections. Actually, remember this in case we do another parcel tax, so all elections. All right. So I'm just gonna go right to um district resources, um prohibition on advocacy. So ED Code does state that no district funds, services, supplies, or equipment shall be used for the purpose of arguing the support or defeat of any ballot measure or candidate. So um we cannot send any yes on or no on but um anybody who lives in the city of Petaluma probably received our mailer in the mail last week. That is straightly about facts. So that is allowable. Um, we can use our resources only for that, but not for advocacy. Um, we cannot use district resources to engage in any sort of campaign activities. We cannot urge voters to vote for or against, though we can encourage people to get out and vote or to register to vote.
And to be clear, this applies more than just to our local elections. Like you cannot use your laptop, your school laptop to donate to a presidential campaign, any of that stuff, people. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And this is as in our official capacity in a, in like a board meeting or something like that, not as an individual living in resident in Petaluma.
So, great question. When I discuss what employees can and cannot do, it is in their official capacity as work versus home. As elected officials, you do not really have work hours or official capaci-, you always have official capacity, so the rules um have been clarified um last January on what you can and cannot do because you are always, you always act as a representative or elected official PCS. The state says.
Yeah, that one is new. It's really annoying.
We'll get.
You'll see. You'll see.
Yeah, all right. So um district equipment and supplies cannot be used to support the campaign. Um, here's a little slide on information versus advocacy. Um, some activity is clearly campaigning, express advocacy, but main but many activities fall outside clear, so you um need to use your judgment. But some test factors are, is it informational? Um, is it conveying? Is it argumentative? Or is it a fair presentation of facts? Um, the closer we get to the election, the more mindful we want to be of how we're presenting the facts of the measure. Um, we can, as I said, represent information, fair and impartial presentations on facts just like this presentation. Um, we can do FAQs, we can do um resolutions. Um, we did do a resolution as a, as a district. Um, we did do a resolution as a, as a district aboard in support of Proposition Two on the ballot. That is allowable. Um, we can engage in voter registration activity, get out the vote using district resources. Um, this was an advice letter that just says what you should avoid. Um, penalty for violations. There are criminal, civil, administrative, legal consequences, and there can be fines. Um, these are just, sorry, I shouldn't have articles in the news, so we don't want an FPPC complaint um, against any of you. So, alright, as district employees. Um, district employees and officials do not lose their rights because they work for a school district. You are free to advocate during non-duty time without district resources. Um, one of the questions that has come up is district phones. Um, are they, if the district pays you a stipend for your phone, can you use it for political activity outside of work hours? Um, it's very, it's not, not allowable. It's not encouraged. So what some districts opt to do is during campaigning, in election seasons, um, employees will give their reimbursement back. Um, but legal did not say that that is something they feel like needs to happen.
Yep.
It says endorsements are not prohibited.
Yep.
But should they, should you specify who that person is, or should you just
You can endorse with your title of trustee, but you, you have to make it clear that the whole district is not endorsing a candidate or a measure.
As an individual. So you can do a resoluce, you can pass a resolution as a district, or, and these, sorry, right now we're, this is about district employees.
Right.
So for this, like, I as chief business official or the superintendent can endorse a campaign when you, when a letter, the mailer Nope, it has not. Never, never mind. Um, but
Yeah, school employees can't use their title, so like, the superintendent can't endorse a city council candidate and say, Matt, like Matthew Harris Superintendent endorses this city council candidate. Matthew Harris as a human, as a, as a parent, as a community activist, can endorse.
So they're, they're not prohibited, so he can in as his title, he, Matthew Harris Superintendent endorses the tax measure, um, is allowed. Matthew Harris Superintendent on behalf of Petaluma City Schools is not allowed. So, yeah, that's for district employees. So basically, um, he can use his title, and so um, not him, like, school employees can use their titles, but not district resources. And no suggestion that it's a district endorsement. And that gets a little um, for, that's a little bit more of a gray area for cabinet members, I, I'd say administration. Um, it's one of the reasons why legal has clarified what board members can and cannot do. I wouldn't be shocked in the next few years if we see changes for that, but a teacher or the PFT president, they absolutely can. Um, employee, the employees do have rights. Um, they can, there is no restriction on political activity outside of work hours. Um, officer employees may not use influence to urge or discourage political action by an employee, um, and these are all Ed Code violations. Prohibited activity, employees, okay. So employees are prohibited from seeking contributions for ballot measures related to compensation working conditions during work hours. So outside of work hours, district employees can solicit um, donations from vendors. Governing board members may establish rules and regulations that prohibit exchanging political activity during work hours or on the premise. Um, but it's not allowed, so you don't really need a board policy to disallow it. You can, yeah, right. So there are political process board policies, if the board has any interest in bringing those up for a discussion. There are BP eleven sixty and BP AR four one one nine point two. Um, it's just basically saying, okay, perfect. Um, authority on campaign. This just gives the school district the power to restrict political speech during work hours. The role of the district, we just ensure they can be outside of our school, um, so they can be on the public sidewalk, but we want to make sure that that activity doesn't interfere with the educational mission of the district. Um. Independent organizations, this is, I'm gonna just skip over this, but basically they can use their resources. Um, union activity, they can solicit contributions for ballot measures, um, also during non-working times.
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, so I know it came up one time, uh, if someone has a button and it's on like their purse, or their bag, or their backpack, and it says yes on, and they're an employee, is that a violation?
I would say if it says yes or no, yes, it is a violation, and it can't be worn during work hours.
They have to.
Yeah.
Right, but students can't. Students have so much free speech in this, at least in California.
Yeah. Alright, so district facilities, um, there's Ed Code that does, um, that allows, but does not require, so organizations can rent the facilities like anybody else, even um, a measure that supports the district, but they do need to follow the same process as the public. Um, and because we do need to comply with the Civic Center Act and district policies. Um, distribution channels includes mailboxes, bulletin boards. Um, we should not distribute any campaign materials. Um, additional board member, or board policies on um, district facilities. Use of social media, personal, as long as you are not hitting that like during work hours, it's fine. Do not use district social media for that, including district emails. Yeah. Alright, um, mass mailing, public agencies may not send communications at public expense that feature elected official at any time. If um, the tangible item is sent to a residence, features an elected officer. So like, we could not use, if we were doing a mailer of facts, we couldn't put the board smiling um, picture on her mailer. So yeah. Also, we can't send more than two hundred pieces to a residence a month, so
Dang, I know.
There's that.
How much, we have too much money, and we really need to just like send.
Yeah. So, okay, this is the one thing that there's been clarification on that, is I find it really important that we touch on tonight. Um, board members may not participate in any proceeding involving an individual or entity who within the past twelve months contributed more than two hundred and fifty dollars to their campaign. You cannot accept campaign contributions of more than two hundred and fifty dollars from an individual or entity in after. So if you go out and you solicit um, from a, a construction company AA, and then um, the bond measure passes, they have donated five thousand dollars as, and you requested it as elected official, we cannot use them for the next twelve months, um, once the bond passed, because it looks like pay for play. So, um so um, that is for board members specifically, agency heads, um. It is solicit contributions of more than two hundred and fifty to any other campaign committee, including a ballot measure committee from an individual or entity involved in the proceeding or twelve months too. So that is also the superintendent of schools. But it does not prohibit the rest of the district administration from doing that.
So just to clarify, if we got a donation from the union, from one of our unions, we cannot vote on a union contract for twelve months?
If you as a board member do it, correct, so that
So it would, would, if, 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 if I did that, would I have to abstain?
Yes.
But only if it's over to an individual?
Yes, yes, mo- yes, most campaign contributions are well over that from individuals, yes. So um, on the, luckily, we have had this, um, these rules since the, we, the district has gone out for the ballot measures, so we are good. Best practices. Just review and clarify any board policies. We do not have those. Um, provide information to employees, candidates, and campaigns, um, have a single source of information. So that is what we're using this documentation for and why we're discussing it um, at a public board meeting. Um, be consistent of treatment, um, work with counsel regarding informational. So we do anything that is going through the district. We're making sure to run it past legal counsel. Um, that includes the Community Workforce Agreement, um, any provisions to that that was approved at the last board meeting. Um, and once again, really watch using district email. Those are the two that put the presentation on, so um, on also, there was a quick summary, like a fact sheet that was also attend, or attached, that is just a quick guide too, that we're, we will go ahead and post um, at the district office for our employees to see. So I just want to clarify for students, um, campaigning can happen on school grounds, but not during instructional time. So you can at lunch, uh, passing periods, um. You are allowed to use materials as classroom discussions, but you want to make it um, informational. You want to balance both sides of the argument if classrooms are discussing this. And students may participate in campaigns on personal time without using their school computers. So, and I'm just gonna go over some quick bottom lines to drive it home. District resources, anything the district owns, controls, or pays for must not be used to urge the support or defeat of a measure or a candidate. The only, so we are, I brought this up as the bond measure, this obviously is also for um, elections for vacant positions. So um, the only permissible use of district resource is to provide fair and impartial information about ballot measures. District resources should not be used in connection with any candidate election. The district may prohibit most campaign activity on its grounds and during instructional time to protect the educational mission of the district. Reviewing and following adopted board policies and regulations is important. So that was the overview, um, a lot to take in, but I think um, as long as we don't use district resources, then keep driving that one home.
And if you, if you have questions, call Amanda. Don't put them in writing.
Yes.
Call her, and then she will get you in touch with the lawyers.
Yes, absolutely.
Cool, thank you. It's, what, fifty-four days till the election? Not that I'm counting. Uh, okay. Anyway, moving on to another fun topic, our cell tower update. One second, I just closed out my notes. Alright, um, tonight I wanted to update the board on the ongoing discussions with the telecommunications company regarding the cell tower on our CASA property. Our legal counsel has been actively engaged in negotiations to reach a mutually agreeable solution for the tower's removal. Unfortunately, despite our best efforts, it seems that we have reached an impasse with the company. Given the lack of progress, the district must now consider pursuing alternative resident, red committees to this, to resolve this issue. Um, we are working with legal counsel, and we are committed to ensuring that the outcome aligns with the best interests of our district and community. Thank you. Can we just make sure to follow up on the uh, PRA that was, uh, we got an email on September third, I think uh, from Piper. She ended up getting some more info, but it looks like it was possibly incomplete.
Yes, so um, we do make sure to comply with PRAs. We have ten days, sometimes there's, we have ten days to respond that we received the quest, request, and sometimes it is, we have to continue working on additional information.
Cool, thank you. Any other questions? Alright, moving on to future business, I think one that we all want to hear, or at least some of us, is can we get a transportation update? And on, in an implementation update as an agendized. I guess let's do it as a presentation at the beginning of the meeting. It doesn't have to be very long. I don't, and in fact, please don't make it very long. Um, just so we can hopefully clear up some confusion in the community, see if there's still confusion after our presentation. Hopefully there, at some point, it stops being confusion, but until then, we persevere. Anyone else with any future business?
Does anyone take a student's? Okay. Um, so it was referenced in the budget about the A through G access grant. I know we've talked about this over the years, a few times, about what this, um, what these funds were gonna be used for. So I just wanted an update to see what we've either used the A through G grant for, or what we plan to use it for.
Yeah, can we use it for the seven-period class schedule change, or at least like the first year of that or something? I don't expect to answer right now, just yeah. Yeah, unless it's yes.
It was a plan that was, that we, that we um, shared, so we can bring that up and review it, and then see what, what adjustments we wanted, would want to make.
Oh, great, thank you. I have more of an announcement slash future business. On Friday, um, Hardy Brown, who came to Petaluma, um, like a year and a half ago, gonna be back in Petaluma. I believe everyone's received the email, so please try to come out to the cemetery at nine a.m. And then two different things. There's like three events, so the first one's nine o'clock in the cemetery on Friday, and then there's two events at SCO, one at three o'clock, and one at five o'clock, so I don't know if you students, maybe like a year and a half ago, there was a gentleman who came to talk about the Underground Railroad, and he brought a bunch of things to the library, so this is that event, so. Anyway, just a reminder.
I was at that event at the library at CASA, and it's really fascinating. The uh, the artifacts he has and he's collected over the years are just amazing and heartbreaking, and um, incredibly um, moving and valuable, so. Um, but I'll be at the
Okay, and when we went on the trip this past year, we found like an interesting connection to Petaluma, so we're gonna talk about all of that on Friday, so. Yeah.
That's really exciting. I'm very mad that it's election season and I can't leave my desk at my house, ever. Yeah, perfect. Any other future business, student board members, are there any topics you'd like to see us talk about in the next month or so? You don't have to know right now, like, when I ask you stuff, it's not trying to put you all on the spot, just making sure you have a chance to have your voice heard. So never feel like you have to have an answer just because we call on you. Um, and adults, any last future business items? With that, I will adjourn our meeting at eight thirty-six P.M. That's not bad.